Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, and our first presentation is a proclamation recognizing May as Foster Care Month, which will be presented by Dr. Exan Gutierrez, our mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. Just want to recognize really an exceptional group, Voices for Children, and also to bring awareness to the public about Foster Care Month. So if I could have Ms. Jessica Munoz come up here, and also any representative from Voices for Children as well? Let's give them a round of applause. You know, I really wanted to recognize not only Foster Care Month, you know, as Foster Care Month, but really an organization that is doing an outstanding job, and that's Voices for Children. This is an organization that not only recruits volunteers to mentor children, foster kids, but also to advocate for their rights, their educational rights, and those kinds of things. And so, just wanted to mention that we have about fifty-four hundred children in Riverside County that are in the foster care system, and so we want to bring awareness about the Voices for Children program called CASA, and it stands for Children...
Court Appointed Special Advocate.
Oh, Court Appointed Special Advocate, and this is, again, a really good program that really supports our foster youth. So I'm gonna allow Ms. Munoz to kind of explain a little bit about the program as well. But this evening, we have a beautiful proclamation on behalf of the City Council and the City of Moreno Valley proclaiming this month as Foster Care Month. And the proclamation reads that whereas the month of May is recognized as National Foster Care Month in the United States, whereas the observance of National Foster Care Month is a special opportunity to celebrate community members who actively support the well-being of children living in foster care. Each year, there are thousands of abused, abandoned, or neglected children living in foster care in Riverside County and in Moreno Valley. Voices for Children's Court Appointed Special Advocate volunteers advocate in court, in schools, and in the community for the best interests in foster care. The Voices for Children has already served over three hundred children, including twenty-six children from Moreno Valley. Voices for Children volunteers have provided over twenty-one thousand hours of service since the program's inception in two thousand and fifteen, although they've had several years prior to that in San Diego County, right? Okay? So now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff hereby commends the Voices for Children CASA volunteers for their outstanding dedication and commitment to our city's children during National Foster Care Month and throughout the year, and do hereby declare May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen to be Voices for Children CASA Volunteer Day throughout the City of Moreno Valley. Let's give them a round of applause. And now we have Ms. Munoz with Voices for Children, if you'd like to say a few words.
So on behalf of Voices for Children, our volunteers, our staff, and our Board of Directors, I'm so grateful to the City of Moreno Valley, to the mayor and the council for recognizing the outstanding efforts of our inspiring volunteers in such a very special way. Voices for Children is the Court Appointed Special Advocate Program for Riverside County. We're the only program in the county authorized by the Juvenile Court here to recruit and train and support volunteers to advocate for individual children and sibling groups who are living in foster care, to provide them that very dedicated and holistic support that sometimes isn't always available in such an overwhelmed bureaucracy. We've been serving Riverside County for just three years, and this year have served nearly three hundred and fifty children. Over two dozen of those children are right here in Riverside County, and I'm so grateful that two of our CASAs who serve Moreno Valley children are with us today. We want to say a very special thank you to the city. The city was one of our earliest partners in our very first years here, supporting and investing our work through the CDBG program, and the mayor and so many of the council members have spent time with me brainstorming and thinking about how we can really connect with this community and reach out to people who might be interested in volunteering. So, again, I just can't express our gratitude enough to the City of Moreno Valley, and we hope to find ways to continue to partner with the city, the residents here, and to find meaningful ways for people to support and invest in our work.
Great, thank you. Next is our special presentation, recognizing May twentieth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, as National Public Works Week. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank our Public Works Director and City Engineer, Michael Wolf, if you can please come up here, along with our Public Works Department and staff for their tireless and diligent efforts to ensure that the City of Moreno Valley operates smoothly. Our Public Works staff works tirelessly in a wide variety of tasks, from ensuring that projects within Moreno Valley satisfy the high standards of environmental care in California, to installing speed bumps to make our streets safer, and upgrading our infrastructure to support Moreno Valley's growing population. Public Works staff also keep our neighborhoods beautiful by coordinating community cleanup days and raising awareness about proper recycling techniques. These highly skilled and diligent people increase the quality of life for every citizen in Moreno Valley, and for that reason, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation. Do we have it up here? So I'm gonna read some of the text of the proclamation. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and whereas the infrastructure, facilities, and services provided by Public Works are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and such services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works professionals, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as storm drains, streets and highways, traffic and transportation, public buildings, lighting and landscaping, and solid waste collections, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of the infrastructure and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and scale of Public Works officials, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff hereby proclaims the week of May twentieth through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, as National Public Works Week. If we can get our Public Works staff to come up and be recognized for all your hard work.
Yeah, just quickly, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, the mayor Protem, and the council for recognizing the men and women of the Public Works Department and for the services that they provided the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[765.54][765.54][S01. Thank you.[766.54][766.54][S01. Thank you.[767.54][767.54][S01. Thank you.[768.54][768.54][S01. Thank you.[769.54][769.54][S01. Thank you.[770.54][770.54][S01. Thank you.[771.54][771.54][S01. Thank you.[772.54][772.54][S01. Thank you.[773.54][773.54][S01. Thank you.[774.54][774.54][S01. Thank you.[775.54][775.54][S01. Thank you.[776.54][776.54][S01. Thank you.[777.54][777.54][S01. Thank you.[778.54][778.54][S01. Thank you.[779.54][779.54][S01. Thank you.[780.54][780.54][S01. Thank you.[781.54][781.54][S01. Thank you.[782.54][782.54][S01. Thank you.[783.54][783.54][S01. Thank you.[784.54][784.54][S01. Thank you.[785.54][785.54][S01. Thank you.[786.54][786.54][S01. Thank you.[787.54][787.54][S01. Thank you.[788.54][788.54][S01. Thank you.[789.54][789.54][S01. Thank you.[790.54][790.54][S01. Thank you.[791.54][791.54][S01. Thank you.[792.54][792.54][S01. Thank you.[793.54][793.54][S01. Thank you.[794.54][794.54][S01. Thank you.[795.54][795.54][S01. Thank you.[796.54][796.54][S01. Thank you.[797.54][797.54][S01. Thank you.[798.54][798.54][S01. Thank you.[799.54][799.54][S01. Thank you.[800.54][800.54][S01. Thank you.[801.54][801.54][S01. Thank you.[802.54][802.54][S01. Thank you.[803.54][803.54][S01. Thank you.[804.54][804.54][S01. Thank you.[805.54][805.54][S01. Thank you.[806.54][806.54][S01. Thank you.[807.54][807.54][S01. Thank you.[808.54][808.54][S01. Thank you.[809.54][809.54][S01. Thank you.[810.54][810.54][S01. Thank you.[811.54][811.54][S01. Thank you.[812.54][812.54][S01. Thank you.[813.54][813.54][S01. Thank you.[814.54][814.54][S01. Thank you.[815.54][815.54][S01. Thank you.[816.54][816.54][S01. Thank you.[817.54][817.54][S01. Thank you.[818.54][818.54][S01. Thank you.[819.54][819.54][S01. Thank you.[820.54][820.54][S01. Thank you.[821.54][821.54][S01. Thank you.[822.54][822.54][S01. Thank you.[823.54][823.54][S01. Thank you.[824.54][824.54][S01. Thank you.[825.54][825.54][S01. Thank you.[826.54][826.54][S01. Thank you.[827.54][827.54][S01. Thank you.[828.54][828.54][S01. Thank you.[829.54][829.54][S01. Thank you.[830.54][830.54][S01. Thank you.[831.54][831.54][S01. Thank you.[832.54][832.54][S01. Thank you.[833.54][833.54][S01. Thank you.[834.54][834.54][S01. Thank you.[835.54][835.54][S01. Thank you.[836.54][836.54][S01. Thank you.[837.54][837.54][S01. Thank you.[838.54][838.54][S01. Thank you.[839.54][839.54][S01. Thank you.[840.54][840.54][S01. Thank you.[841.54][841.54][S01. Thank you.[842.54][842.54][S01. Thank you.[843.54][843.54][S01. Thank you.[844.54][844.54][S01. Thank you.[845.54][845.54][S01. Thank you.[846.54][846.54][S01. Thank you.[847.54][847.54][S01. Thank you.[848.54][848.54][S01. Thank you.[849.54][849.54][S01. Thank you.[850.54][850.54][S01. Thank you.[851.54][851.54][S01. Thank you.[852.54][852.54][S01. Thank you.[853.54][853.54][S01. Thank you.[854.54][854.54][S01. Thank you.[855.54][855.54][S01. Thank you.[856.54][856.54][S01. Thank you.[857.54][857.54][S01. Thank you.[858.54][858.54][S01. Thank you.[859.54][859.54][S01. Thank you.[860.54][860.54][S01. Thank you.[861.54][861.54][S01. Thank you.[862.54][862.54][S01. Thank you.[863.54][863.54][S01. Thank you.[864.54][864.54][S01. Thank you.[865.54][865.54][S01. Thank you.[866.54][866.54][S01. Thank you.[867.54][867.54][S01. Thank you.[868.54][868.54][S01. Thank you.[869.54][869.54][S01. Thank you.[870.54][870.54][S01. Thank you.[871.54][871.54][S01. Thank you.[872.54][872.54][S01. Thank you.[873.54][873.54][S01. Thank you.[874.54][874.54][S01. Thank you.[875.54][875.54][S01. Thank you.[876.54][876.54][S01. Thank you.[877.54][877.54][S01. Thank you.[878.54][878.54][S01. Thank you.[879.54][879.54][S01. Thank you.[880.54][880.54][S01. Thank you.[881.54][881.54][S01. Thank you.[882.54][882.54][S01. Thank you.[883.54][883.54][S01. Thank you.[884.54][884.54][S01. Thank you.[885.54][885.54][S01. Thank you.[886.54][886.54][S01. Thank you.[887.54][887.54][S01. Thank you.[888.54][888.54][S01. Thank you.[889.54][889.54][S01. Thank you.[890.54][890.54][S01. Thank you.[891.54][891.54][S01. Thank you.[892.54][892.54][S01. Thank you.[893.54][893.54][S01. Thank you.[894.54][894.54][S01. Thank you.[895.54][895.54][S01. Thank you.[896.54][896.54][S01. Thank you.[897.54][897.54][S01. Thank you.[898.54][898.54][S01. Thank you.[899.54][899.54][S01. Thank you.[900.54][900.54][S01. Thank you.[901.54][901.54][S01. Thank you.[902.54][902.54][S01. Thank you.[903.54][903.54][S01. Thank you.[904.54][904.54][S01. Thank you.[905.54][905.54][S01. Thank you.[906.54][906.54][S01. Thank you.[907.54][907.54][S01. Thank you.[908.54][908.54][S01. Thank you.[909.54][909.54][S01. Thank you.[910.54][910.54][S01. Thank you.[911.54][911.54][S01. Thank you.[912.54][912.54][S01. Thank you.[913.54][913.54][S01. Thank you.[914.54][914.54][S01. Thank you.[915.54][915.54][S01. Thank you.[916.54][916.54][S01. Thank you.[917.54][917.54][S01. Thank you.[918.54][918.54][S01. Thank you.[919.54][919.54][S01. Thank you.[920.54][920.54][S01. Thank you.[921.54][921.54][S01. Thank you.[922.54][922.54][S01. Thank you.[923.54][923.54][S01. Thank you.[924.54][924.54][S01. Thank you.[925.54][925.54][S01. Thank you.[926.54][926.54][S01. Thank you.[927.54][927.54][S01. Thank you.[928.54][928.54][S01. Thank you.[929.54][929.54][S01. Thank you.[930.54][930.54][S01. Thank you.[931.54][931.54][S01. Thank you.[932.54][932.54][S01. Thank you.[933.54][933.54][S01. Thank you.[934.54][934.54][S01. Thank you.[935.54][935.54][S01. Thank you.[936.54][936.54][S01. Thank you.[937.54][937.54][S01. Thank you.[938.54][938.54][S01. Thank you.[939.54][939.54][S01. Thank you.[940.54][940.54][S01. Thank you.[941.54][941.54][S01. Thank you.[942.54][942.54][S01. Thank you.[943.54][943.54][S01. Thank you.[944.54][944.54][S01. Thank you.[945.54][945.54][S01. Thank you.[946.54][946.54][S01. Thank you.[947.54][947.54][S01. Thank you.[948.54][948.54][S01. Thank you.[949.54][949.54][S01. Thank you.[950.54][950.54][S01. Thank you.[951.54][951.54][S01. Thank you.[952.54][952.54][S01. Thank you.[953.54][953.54][S01. Thank you.[954.54][954.54][S01. Thank you.[955.54][955.54][S01. Thank you.[956.54][956.54][S01. Thank you.[957.54][957.54][S01. Thank you.[958.54][958.54][S01. Thank you.[959.54][959.54][S01. Thank you.[960.54][960.54][S01. Thank you.[961.54][961.54][S01. Thank you.[962.54][962.54][S01. Thank you.[963.54][963.54][S01. Thank you.[964.54][964.54][S01. Thank you.[965.54][965.54][S01. Thank you.[966.54][966.54][S01. Thank you.[967.54][967.54][S01. Thank you.[968.54][968.54][S01. Thank you.[969.54][969.54][S01. Thank you.[970.54][970.54][S01. Thank you.[971.54][971.54][S01. Thank you.[972.54][972.54][S01. Thank you.[973.54][973.54][S01. Thank you.[974.54][974.54][S01. Thank you.[975.54][975.54][S01. Thank you.[976.54][976.54][S01. Thank you.[977.54][977.54][S01. Thank you.[978.54][978.54][S01. Thank you.[979.54][979.54][S01. Thank you.[980.54][980.54][S01. Thank you.[981.54][981.54][S01. Thank you.[982.54][982.54][S01. Thank you.[983.54][983.54][S01. Thank you.[984.54][984.54][S01. Thank you.[985.54][985.54][S01. Thank you.[986.54][986.54][S01. Thank you.[987.54][987.54][S01. Thank you.[988.54][988.54][S01. Thank you.[989.54][989.54][S01. Thank you.[990.54][990.54][S01. Thank you.[991.54][991.54][S01. Thank you.[992.54][992.54][S01. Thank you.[993.54][993.54][S01. Thank you.[994.54][994.54][S01. Thank you.[995.54][995.54][S01. Thank you.[996.54][996.54][S01. Thank you.[997.54][997.54][S01. Thank you.[998.54][998.54][S01. Thank you.[999.54][999.54][S01. Thank you.[1000.54][1000.54][S01. Thank you.[1001.54][1001.54][S01. Thank you.[1002.54][1002.54][S01. Thank you.[1003.54][1003.54][S01. Thank you.[1004.54][1004.54][S01. Thank you.[1005.54][1005.54][S01. Thank you.[1006.54][1006.54][S01. Thank you.[1007.54][1007.54][S01. Thank you.[1008.54][1008.54][S01. Thank you.[1009.54][1009.54][S01. Thank you.[1010.54][1010.54][S01. Thank you.[1011.54][1011.54][S01. Thank you.[1012.54][1012.54][S01. Thank you.[1013.54][1013.54][S01. Thank you.[1014.54][1014.54][S01. Thank you.[1015.54][1015.54][S01. Thank you.[1016.54][1016.54][S01. Thank you.[1017.54][1017.54][S01. Thank you.[1018.54][1018.54][S01. Thank you.[1019.54][1019.54][S01. Thank you.[1020.54][1020.54][S01. Thank you.[1021.54][1021.54][S01. Thank you.[1022.54][1022.54][S01. Thank you.[1023.54][1023.54][S01. Thank you.[1024.54][1024.54][S01. Thank you.[1025.54][1025.54][S01. Thank you.[1026.54][1026.54][S01. Thank you.[1027.54][1027.54][S01. Thank you.[1028.54][1028.54][S01. Thank you.[1029.54][1029.54][S01. Thank you.[1030.54][1030.54][S01. Thank you.[1031.54][1031.54][S01. Thank you.[1032.54][1032.54][S01. Thank you.[1033.54][1033.54][S01. Thank you.[1034.54][1034.54][S01. Thank you.[1035.54][1035.54][S01. Thank you.[1036.54][1036.54][S01. Thank you.[1037.54][1037.54][S01. Thank you.[1038.54][1038.54][S01. Thank you.[1039.54][1039.54][S01. Thank you.[1040.54][1040.54][S01. Thank you.[1041.54][1041.54][S01. Thank you.[1042.54][1042.54][S01. Thank you.[1043.54][1043.54][S01. Thank you.[1044.54][1044.54][S01. Thank you.[1045.54][1045.54][S01. Thank you.[1046.54][1046.54][S01. Thank you.[1047.54][1047.54][S01. Thank you.[1048.54][1048.54][S01. Thank you.[1049.54][1049.54][S01. Thank you.[1050.54][1050.54][S01. Thank you.[1051.54][1051.54][S01. Thank you.[1052.54][1052.54][S01. Thank you.[1053.54][1053.54][S01. Thank you.[1054.54][1054.54][S01. Thank you.[1055.54][1055.54][S01. Thank you.[1056.54][1056.54][S01. Thank you.[1057.54][1057.54][S01. Thank you.[1058.54][1058.54][S01. Thank you.[1059.54][1059.54][S01. Thank you.[1060.54][1060.54][S01. Thank you.[1061.54][1061.54][S01. Thank you.[1062.54][1062.54][S01. Thank you.[1063.54][1063.54][S01. Thank you.[1064.54][1064.54][S01. Thank you.[1065.54][1065.54][S01. Thank you.[1066.54][1066.54][S01. Thank you.[1067.54][1067.54][S01. Thank you.[1068.54][1068.54][S01. Thank you.[1069.54][1069.54][S01. Thank you.[1070.54][1070.54][S01. Thank you.[1071.54][1071.54][S01. Thank you.[1072.54][1072.54][S01. Thank you.[1073.54][1073.54][S01. Thank you.[1074.54][1074.54][S01. Thank you.[1075.54][1075.54][S01. Thank you.[1076.54][1076.54][S01. Thank you.[1077.54][1077.54][S01. Thank you.[1078.54][1078.54][S01. Thank you.[1079.54][1079.54][S01. Thank you.[1080.54][1080.54][S01. Thank you.[1081.54][1081.54][S01. Thank you.[1082.54][1082.54][S01. Thank you.[1083.54][1083.54][S01. Thank you.[1084.54][1084.54][S01. Thank you.[1085.54][1085.54][S01. Thank you.[1086.54][1086.54][S01. Thank you.[1087.54][1087.54][S01. Thank you.[1088.54][1088.54][S01. Thank you.[1089.54][1089.54][S01. Thank you.[1090.54][1090.54][S01. Thank you.[1091.54][1091.54][S01. Thank you.[1092.54][1092.54][S01. Thank you.[1093.54][1093.54][S01. Thank you.[1094.54][1094.54][S01. Thank you.[1095.54][1095.54][S01. Thank you.[1096.54][1096.54][S01. Thank you.[1097.54][1097.54][S01. Thank you.[1098.54][1098.54][S01. Thank you.[1099.54][1099.54][S01. Thank you.[1100.54][1100.54][S01. Thank you.[1101.54][1101.54][S01. Thank you.[1102.54][1102.54][S01. Thank you.[1103.54][1103.54][S01. Thank you.[1104.54][1104.54][S01. Thank you.[1105.54][1105.54][S01. Thank you.[1106.54][1106.54][S01. Thank you.[1107.54][1107.54][S01. Thank you.[1108.54][1108.54][S01. Thank you.[1109.54][1109.54][S01. Thank you.[1110.54][1110.54][S01. Thank you.[1111.54][1111.54][S01. Thank you.[1112.54][1112.54][S01. Thank you.[1113.54][1113.54][S01. Thank you.[1114.54][1114.54][S01. Thank you.[1115.54][1115.54][S01. Thank you.[1116.54][1116.54][S01. Thank you.[1117.54][1117.54][S01. Thank you.[1118.54][1118.54][S01. Thank you.[1119.54][1119.54][S01. Thank you.[1120.54][1120.54][S01. Thank you.[1121.54][1121.54][S01. Thank you.[1122.54][1122.54][S01. Thank you.[1123.54][1123.54][S01. Thank you.[1124.54][1124.54][S01. Thank you.[1125.54][1125.54][S01. Thank you.[1126.54][1126.54][S01. Thank you.[1127.54][1127.54][S01. Thank you.[1128.54][1128.54][S01. Thank you.[1129.54][1129.54][S01. Thank you.[1130.54][1130.54][S01. Thank you.[1131.54][1131.54][S01. Thank you.[1132.54][1132.54][S01. Thank you.[1133.54][1133.54][S01. Thank you.[1134.54][1134.54][S01. Thank you.[1135.54][1135.54][S01. Thank you.[1136.54][1136.54][S01. Thank you.[1137.54][1137.54][S01. Thank you.[1138.54][1138.54][S01. Thank you.[1139.54][1139.54][S01. Thank you.[1140.54][1140.54][S01. Thank you.[1141.54][1141.54][S01. Thank you.[1142.54][1142.54][S01. Thank you.[1143.54][1143.54][S01. Thank you.[1144.54][1144.54][S01. Thank you.[1145.54][1145.54][S01. Thank you.[1146.54][1146.54][S01. Thank you.[1147.54][1147.54][S01. Thank you.[1148.54][1148.54][S01. Thank you.[1149.54][1149.54][S01. Thank you.[1150.54][1150.54][S01. Thank you.[1151.54][1151.54][S01. Thank you.[1152.54][1152.54][S01. Thank you.[1153.54][1153.54][S01. Thank you.[1154.54][1154.54][S01. Thank you.[1155.54][1155.54][S01. Thank you.[1156.54][1156.54][S01. Thank you.[1157.54][1157.54][S01. Thank you.[1158.54][1158.54][S01. Thank you.[1159.54][1159.54][S01. Thank you.[1160.54][1160.54][S01. Thank you.[1161.54][1161.54][S01. Thank you.[1162.54][1162.54][S01. Thank you.[1163.54][1163.54][S01. Thank you.[1164.54][1164.54][S01. Thank you.[1165.54][1165.54][S01. Thank you.[1166.54][1166.54][S01. Thank you.[1167.54][1167.54][S01. Thank you.[1168.54][1168.54][S01. Thank you.[1169.54][1169.54][S01. Thank you.[1170.54][1170.54][S01. Thank you.[1171.54][1171.54][S01. Thank you.[1172.54][1172.54][S01. Thank you.[1173.54][1173.54][S01. Thank you.[1174.54][1174.54][S01. Thank you.[1175.54][1175.54][S01. Thank you.[1176.54][1176.54][S01. Thank you.[1177.54][1177.54][S01. Thank you.[1178.54][1178.54][S01. Thank you.[1179.54][1179.54][S01. Thank you.[1180.54][1180.54][S01. Thank you.[1181.54][1181.54][S01. Thank you.[1182.54][1182.54][S01. Thank you.[1183.54][1183.54][S01. Thank you.[1184.54][1184.54][S01. Thank you.[1185.54][1185.54][S01. Thank you.[1186.54][1186.54][S01. Thank you.[1187.54][1187.54][S01. Thank you.[1188.54][1188.54][S01. Thank you.[1189.54][1189.54][S01. Thank you.[1190.54][1190.54][S01. Thank you.
And you would give them a God-given authority, Father. Thank you for our mayor and the council. Lord, I pray you protect him, give him good health and wisdom beyond their own. Well, thank you for all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Wilson from Lyne House Baptist Church for the prayer. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
You're here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sanzomar, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kurlowitz, Chief of Police.
Abdul Alamat, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Thank you for the staff and thank you for all you do. We do have, as a reminder, friendly reminder, we do have Spanish translation services in the back. So if you need any of the devices, please reach out to them. Also, before we hear public comments tonight, I just want to mention that I would like for the comments to be respectful towards each other, especially the individuals in the audience, you know, to be respectful to the person that's speaking at the podium. Each comment is limited to three minutes for each speaker, and also that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, so on anything under the jurisdiction of the City Council, may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There's a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed either to myself or the council as a whole. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, I am asking council and staff to not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
So far, six.
Okay.
I will be calling three at a time, and can you please line up so that you can start speaking right away when the other speaker ends? First is Bud Elam, Edgar Garcia, and Kenny Iglesias.
Okay, yes. Good evening, Bud.
Hello, my name's obviously Bud Elam. Rick handed out a flyer, color flyer. And there's a kind of a yellow patch up here.
Bud, if you could speak into the microphone.
So there's kind of a yellow patch up here, a white patch down here. The Blatchers property and the church property over here. And that's what I'm talking about. First, I'm going to talk about the county, then their property, okay? Then the Blatchers property. So I talked to Barry at Marion Ashley's office about the abysmal look of their property, of the county property. And I would implore all of you guys to go by and look at it. It's an absolute mess over there. And please, call Marion, the City Council, please, call Marion Barry, Marion Ashley's office and complain, and ask them to put up the block wall, and I believe they have financing for the block wall, just to hide the mess that they have behind over there. They have an unpaved parking lot, they've got dirt, they've got gas tanks. It's a pretty giant mess. So please call Marion Ashley's office and ask them to put the block wall up. And then I begged the City Council to ask the planning department to fix the zoning problem at that property over there. None of you are responsible for it. You inherited the mess when the city annexed the property from the county. The county will not change, and the county will not change their use of their property, ever. So that can, and it's all of this property over here, because I'm kind of out of sync. All of this property over here is zoned R5. The county's not going to change their use. The church is not going to change their use. And that leaves the Blatchers property in the middle, which should be, it's not big enough to actually develop. So if you would consider changing this, getting the county, the planning department to change the zoning, if there's supposed to be a new general plan done, change the zoning to light industrial for that property over there, then the property could be developed. Blatchers property could be developed into something that's useful for the city and not just a mess. So, and then there's no reason for Roy and Pete to pay for a zoning change. The city does not allow pocket zoning changes. So even if they applied for it and paid the money and went through all the work, it would be turned down because the city does not allow pocket zoning changes. So please, when you do the new general plan, change the zoning of the property over there to something realistic, because R5 isn't it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Next speaker is Edgar, followed by Kenny Iglesias and Guy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just here concerned about some roads pretty much everywhere in Moreno Valley. I got hit by a rock going to RCC, and it cracked my windshield. I kind of gave it enough more, I think a little bit more and enough time for the city or Public Works to go over and pick it up. Nothing has been fixed. I don't mind about the small potholes, but the debris being left behind from the roads being cracked, and the pieces remaining from the potholes are just laying on the roads itself, which is causing a danger to the public. Guys, want to zoom in to the picture? It's almost, they're bigger than the size of my hand, some of them. And I could just imagine what the bikers, because I used to bike myself on the roads going to RCC. If one of these trucks actually hits the right angle on this rock, it could actually hit the biker or even a child walking on the sidewalk. And this is pretty much everywhere through Conaw, Heacock, Cactus. And there hasn't been any, having seen none of the Public Works cleaning the roads, it's getting worse and worse as the days proceed. So that's just my only reason with the roads. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Edgar. And you do have our staff's contact information now, so they'll be reaching out to you. Thank you. Ken, followed by Guy Zazzard, and then Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and fellow residents. I would like to just say a letter to myself, a letter to my dear yourself. Hey, Ken, you're probably watching this on 8K 10 years from now or nine years from now, when they become standard. Maybe you have a 32K, which should be coming in about roughly the same time as you are seeing this. Oh, by the way, I'm 20 years old, if you haven't noticed by this time. You are supposed to be watching this on May 16, 2027. Oh, that's like a nice number. And hopefully, you have done good for yourself. Goodbye.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker is Guy Zazzard and Rafael Brugeras and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Good evening, Guy.
Staff. I'm here tonight to thank the city for funding the H1A project. That's the storm drain system on Hubbard Street, which was long overdue. I also want to thank my councilmember, Jeff Gaiba, for his leadership and support, working with my friend Pete Becker, ensuring that all the bases were covered during this construction. And we did encounter some problems. Councilman Gaiba, I salute you, and I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Rafael Brugeras, Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. You know, I couldn't ask for a better blessing than to hear the building and safety supervisor, director, telling us how well we're doing in the city of Moreno Valley, how busy they are by applying the rules and the law of the state, county, and our city. See, they confirm of all the hard work that hundreds of us that fight for daily, not only in the streets, but in meetings. We fight for that confirmation that we just heard today. And I also want to thank Victoria Baca and her wonderful picture in the press enterprise for standing out for her District 1. There's a lot of complaints that come out of District 1, a lot of residents complain. And we know a lot of them are made up, because that has already been established. A lot of people complained about Edgemont, but Edgemont is not only District 1, there's a big district. And Victoria covers a lot of it. So if Edgemont says oh, is a reason, they want it like that. Because any new improvement in Edgemont will cost them tax dollars. So you have to build everything around them. And that's what Victoria Baca has been doing, with her votes. When planning comes in here and zone changes come, she has to make a decision for her district. What's best for her district. And that's what she has done. So when you hear people complaining about Victoria Baca, they're only angry because they can't become the person that she is. A strong woman, a woman from Moreno Valley, a woman that has convictions, that does what's right only for her district, but for all other three districts, because they're all combined. Her vote makes one, I mean, two, three, and four complete, just like the other three, if they vote right for the whole city. Because you have to look after your district first before you can do anything else. Your district comes first. And if you win for your district, then you can win for the other three. Never throw your district under the bus, under the bus. Because that's what I watch out for. And I thank Victoria and Festival for coming through for that part of the district, because Heacock is important to Moreno Valley. That is the foundation of what it once was when home base was there. We're going to get it back with leadership like Victoria's. Victoria, thank you so much.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Roy Blackard.
I bet you're thrilled to see me. Well, I'll mention H1 first, that was a long due project. A lot of people had a lot of involvement in that, the county flood control, Jason Uli, Pete on the Flood Control Commission, Guy had a lot to do with that, the engineers, everybody brought that project together. It might not be completely done, but it is a nice project. And Jeff, everybody on the council, that's a great thing to have done. And I'll even, nobody mentioned it, but you know, the most important court is the Court of Public Opinion. And if Deborah probably wouldn't have posted that video on the site, this probably would have never got done. So she probably deserves a little thank you too for moving this project along and making the, getting the publicity out there. But as Bud mentioned, and I've mentioned before, you're really in danger of costing the city from a major senior housing development. And as he pointed out, it has to do with my property. And I will ask you, did a former city engineer walk up in the offices up there and tell you Pete and Roy were more right than you, than everybody here was? If that happened, and I think you're seeing the consequences yet of the actions or the inactions you don't take. Because I can't do it. I've told them that, I was told I could, and now you're hearing it again. I can't fix it. Only this body can. Only this staff can. Now, do you want Moreno Valley to move forward like it should be? Without all the contention and all the stuff? Are you going to put it in the past? Are you going to move forward and do what's right? Because nobody else can, and that's why you were elected. You're elected as representatives. That property is in your district, David. It needs to be, it needs to be redeveloped, like a lot of parts, like my native area, Edgemont, California. That needs to be redeveloped sorely. It has been stripped of the funds of the $25 million it was entitled to, and very, very, very little has been done in that area to improve it. It's still, it looks 50, almost 57 years worse than when I first saw it. So I'm asking you, please, fix my property, fix this city, and make it a better place for everybody, and let's leave the attitudes outside at the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so public comments is now closed. Would any councilmembers like to make their reports or comments at this time? Okay, we are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. These are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion, unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Development Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustee requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. I now will take a request for any items to be either discussed or voted for separate action. I would like A6 for a brief report. Mike Lee, you can give a brief report about the business incubator. Anyone else? A16? A16, brief report. That is Parks and Community Services. All right. We'll go ahead and start with A6. Go ahead and take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor members of City Council. This item before your consideration tonight is approval of a MOU between the city of Moreno Valley and Moreno Valley College. Back in 2017, the City Council approved an agreement with the college to really enhance their collaboration and partnership efforts. And as a result of that collaboration, we have done various different programs with the college. The college has participated in our business outreach to reach out to a lot of the major employers to really educate the businesses on what the college can offer on workforce development, as well as some of the programs that is available to them. They're also participated in our Business Roundtable, a strategic partner in many of our Business Roundtable events. We have also participated with the college on various CTE programs and also sit on their advisory board, bridging the academia and the business components. Most recently, under the leadership of the mayor and the City Council, under the college partners initiative, we have partnered with them in funding the second year of the college partners. And recently, we've won an award from CalEd for that partnership. And also, we are also partnered with them as part of the Mayor Bloomberg's Challenge, being a champion city. And they are one of the core members in our partnership with them and working on the mayor's challenge. Before you is this MOU, and what is for your consideration is approval of a maker space, or what's called a business incubator. And a maker space is really an area or place in which business and students can come in and learn to make things. And usually, a lot of the equipments in these maker spaces are very expensive and very cost prohibitive for businesses to absorb. And it's something that we have worked on with the college for the past year and a half. They have received a grant from a couple entities to fund the maker space as part of the MOU. This will not cost the city any funds, but also, we're just working with our relationship with the business community to really promote the maker space. This is before you for your consideration. I also have Dr. Melody Green, the dean of the CTE, here to answer any questions the college may have. Thank you.
And then if we could have Melody Green? Hi. If we can give her a round of applause from the college, she's here.
Good evening, thank you.
If anyone has any questions, or?
Easiest meeting ever for me.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you. Okay, A16 is Community, Parks and Community Services?
Just real quick question. Patty, there's a cost to enter into the parade, correct? A small fees?
Uh, yes.
What's the difference between residents and non-resident fees? Is there a considerable amount?
I don't know off the top of my head if there's a considerable difference for residents and non-residents.
The festival is open to not only residents in Moreno Valley, but outside of the city also. They can actually enter the parade, can't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The reason I ask that, because I spoke to several people recently, and they live in Riverside, and one person was in Paris. And they were interested in entering a float in the parade. And they were kind of curious to know if they were able to come in, bring the float, and present it at our parade. And I told them, yes, it's open to them, but they needed to pay a fees to get in. So I was correct.
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
I can reach out to them if you want to give me their contact information.
I definitely will, definitely will.
Thank you.
This year, or we have about eight to 10 floats going to be entered in this year's parade. So I just want the audience and the residents to know to come on out, because this is going to be exciting to see about eight to 10 floats out there. And believe me, they're going to be, they're going to be nice floats. So I want the residents to come out and enjoy themselves for that event. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Any public comments on consent items other than separate actions?
None.
I entertain a motion by council to approve consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tembaca, second by Councilmember Marquez. Please take a vote. And it's approved unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to... There's no items for F, but we do have an E for public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on the public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak must complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the bailiff. So we'll go ahead and start with item E1, Report of Public Works Public Hearing Regarding the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem. I'll take this one. Counsel, good evening. This item before you this evening is the public hearing and associated resolution for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MPDS parcel charge. Specifically, this is about the parcel charge for MPDS for next fiscal year for 1819. This is a standard annual process for the charge, and it applies only to the properties that have previously approved the charge. So there's a state permit requirements that we as a co-permittee are required to enforce for the management of the discharge into the city's storm drain system. There's a cost associated with that. So parcel charges for new development was initiated in 2003 for residential developments by council, and then 2006 for commercial industrial projects initiated by council. So those parcel charges covers the costs associated with managing the state permit requirements. And again, as mentioned before, these are parcel charges only approved via ballot process by property owners. So prior to the levy by the county on the tax bill, the charges must be reviewed and approved by council. For fiscal year 1819 charges, there is an allowable CPI, which was again approved as part of the process. Those have been included into the new charges as shown in the staff report. So also attached to the staff report includes a levy for each parcel. If you notice, the majority of the actual applied rates are less than the maximum. Staff recommends the following. Recommend opening the public hearing and taking testimony, and then closing the public hearing. And then absent any compelling argument, approve the maximum and implied charges and adopt the resolution. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Michael. Any council questions of staff? Go ahead and please press your request. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Madam Clerk, any public testimony? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Seeing there's no deliberation, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Can we approve both at the same time by one vote?
Say again?
Two and three?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation numbers two and three.
Both moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tembaca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Go ahead and please vote. Thank you, and it's approved. Five to zero. We'll go ahead and go to General Business, Fiscal Year 2017-2018, Third Quarter Budget Review and Approval of the Revised Operating Budgets for Fiscal Years 2017, 2018, and 2018/2019. Report of Financial Management Services Department, Marshall Ironman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members. During the two-year budget period, the City Council has updated on the fiscal conditions throughout the process of quarterly budget reviews. This ongoing process ensures a forum to review expenditures and revenues and examine any changes on those revenue estimates throughout the year. The report this evening provides the third quarter budget report through March 31, 2018. That's the first nine months of the fiscal year. And it also proposes some recommended budget adjustments to address projected expenditures and revenues through the fiscal year end. As we look at the third quarter status where we are, with regards to the general fund revenues, with nine months expired, we would presume typically about 75% of the year is gone. But many of our revenues trail towards the later end of the year. Property taxes aren't received until the later parts of May. At this point of the year, the general fund would typically expect about 61% of the revenue received to date. At this period, we've received 63% of those revenues, so we're right in line with expectations. And those revenues continue to be stable as we're looking at it moving through the end of the fiscal year. When we look at the general fund expenditures, again, we've had 75% of the year expire. The expenditures tend to follow more of a straight-line basis. At this point, we would expect about 75% spent. We are currently at 72%. So as with the past couple of years, revenues are a little bit above, and expenditures are a little bit below, which is where we prefer to be. Now, beyond the third quarter budget, as we look towards closing out the fiscal year, there are some adjustments that we were proposing to City Council. The 1718 general fund revenue budget right now is approximately $104.3 million. The third quarter budget changes are proposing recommended adjustments to increase revenue in excess of $526,000 to approximately $104.8 million. This is primarily due to some of the increased interest income. As the feds have raised interest rates, we see some positive attributes going to our revenue flows, again with franchise fees and lose, plan checks, and other fees. So we are seeing some impacts from development in the community that's impacting our revenue. With regards to proposed changes for the general fund expenditures, we're currently looking at one-time expenditures or total expenditures of $103.5 million. We have recommended adjustments of $649,000 here, which would raise it up to $100.4 million. This would still leave a $600,000-plus surplus in the general fund. And many of these adjustments are primarily driven off what we're looking at at the fire department. There's been adjustments to their contracts, some of the administration, and along with overtime hours have increased their budget this year. The fund, though, continues to be structurally balanced, and we look to have it continue to be balanced through the end of the fiscal year, and looking forward to fiscal year 1819. The detail of all the proposed budget adjustments are set forth in Exhibit A of the staff report as well. As we look at other funds, when we're looking at our grant funds, I did want to highlight, we do have a budget adjustment of $100,000, revenues and expenditures, and this is with regards to the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Challenge. So we're making that to tie in with the revenue that we've received. With regards to our home investment partnership, in 2015, the City Council approved a four-unit multifamily rental building on Allies Place. At that time, we had committed $629,000 of home funds. Those home funds are still committed. The project is ready to move forward. They had two fourplexes at the time, they've completed one, they're moving forward with the second one. We're just looking at reapproving the budget to match what council had previously approved with those home funds being spent on this project. When we look at development impact fees, again, one of the indices of really where we're looking at with development, we're proposing to adjust the revenue on development impact fees in excess of $2.7 million. Again, these funds, though, are restricted for future specific purposes, typically tied in with capital projects to offset the impacts of new development. But that does show that we've had a lot of development in the last year coming in the pipeline that we hope to see in the future. As we look at the Moreno Valley utility, this is one area that we are proposing an additional staff position. With Moreno Valley utility, as we look towards 2020 with the expiration of the ENCO contract, we want to look at the strategic plan and operations of the utility. One of the key players that we need in this is an electric utility chief engineer. Currently, we outsource all of our engineering to ENCO. And at this point, we're looking at bringing a chief engineer in-house that then could understand the operations, bring in that institutional knowledge within the city. Again, they would then focus on some of the requests for information for some of the services that ENCO is doing currently, and would... and would greatly benefit us in that analysis of the ENCO contract so we can look at how we term that out through 2020, what we look at contracting services in the future, and will we look towards the long-term viability of the utility. And we're proposing this position because we want to make sure that we don't have any impacts to service, economic development, or any of those items as we move through this transition in the future. So, we're planning ahead on that component. That position will be funded solely out of Moreno Valley Utility and benefit those projects directly. With that, that kind of gives you a summary of the funds. I, I did want to point out one thing, too, is as we're looking towards future budgets, the city council has already adopted the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, and we've been updating that with you on a quarterly basis as well. But we continue to look towards the future. One of the things that we've begun is the join the conversation campaign. We do have that posted on the city website, and we have been receiving feedback from the public, and we would request that public goes there, completes the surveys, and provide us, us information so that we can relay that to the council as we plan and develop budgets in the future. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Marshall. Council questions of staff? And just to the public knows as well, this went through the finance committee.
Yes, sir.
As well, and, and then that surplus was about $5 million from last year? And that's being used for the one-time monies, right?
Yes, last year, we had a surplus in excess of $5 million, and council has been using those for some specific projects to benefit the community. The key thing is those are one-time expenditures.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
Yes, Roy Blackard.
Okay. You have a comment also, Rafael? Yeah, okay. So, right after Roy will be Rafael.
One thing, and since it's on the budget, and I've asked it since the adoption of the last budget back in June, again, and I have not gotten an answer. Has the $1.75 million been appropriated for the general plan amendment? And what is the progress that we are making on that project? That's a project and something that should be done for the community. If you want to talk economic development, there's a lot of holes in this community that need to be fixed. You just heard about one of them, but there's many, many, many other issues that we have to do. I proposed back in June, when you put the budget, I said you could put the GPA on a fast track. You could do it like Mill Creek. If you would have took that recommendation, you would probably be passing it today. I see nothing done on that, and I think that is a very big detriment to the community. Not only to the residents, but it sends a signal to the business community that action doesn't happen here. That things don't get done in a timely manner. And you know what? As somebody kind of famous around here said, a lot of times, they drive right down the 215, right down the 60, bypassing Moreno Valley. It's time we fix this stuff. Get on the ball and do it. Now, I want to address the ENCO issue a little bit because a former mayor said that ENCO contract was one of the most one-sided contracts he'd ever seen. Not necessarily saying contracting out is bad. Usually, it will save you money if you've got judicious negotiators to do this. But look at, look at Riverside Public Utility. And when you, when you allow the public employee unions to take over, you get $370,000-plus dispatchers. That's the person that answers the phone. So, I would caution this council very sternly not to look at building another public employee empire in the city of Moreno Valley. Let's let the free market work. Look at Sandy Springs, Georgia. That is a shining example. I brought that to this council over five years ago. No action. Other cities are taking action and saving lots of money doing it. These are the things that you should be doing for the benefit of the community. And they're not getting done. And they should be getting done. And it's only, it only takes three votes in most every action to move everything. When is it gonna happen?
Thank you, Roy. Rafael?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, staff, residents, and guests. Since, since it was, since it was mentioned tonight about the Moreno Valley Utility, it was approved on April 17th, and I didn't get an opportunity to talk about it, that we are competing with Edison dollar to dollar. So, every time Edison goes up, we go up. And I live in that district. That's my bill. And many of us, thousands of us, don't appreciate when we compete like that. Okay? So, that was approved. But there's an increase of $69,000 extra a month. Times 12, that's $800,000, $800,000 extra a month. So, if we're looking for a professional, let them take it out of that money that was generated and approved on April 17th to hire that professional. Because we're gonna need him to take care of the poles that we bought from Edison. See, that money should go to a fund. That $69,000 extra money should go to a private fund on its own. Because we're talking $800,000 a year, times that five years, we're talking close to $5 million. We can do a lot with that money. I'm annoyed how that was not pulled on April 17th to talk about it. How we follow Edison. When we buy our own things, we have our own grids that we own in this, in this city, in that district. And we pay as much money as Edison. Why can't the people of Edison decide to move into Moreno Valley Utilities and pay less? I can't understand that why that wasn't talked... He brought it up. I'm glad he did. Marshall brought it up. And I wasn't gonna say nothing to it, he brought up Moreno Valley. And where he's gonna get the money? There it is. $69,000 extra a month just went up when you approved it last on April 17th. And we're gonna hire a professional? And I'm glad we are, because we need to have our own things. You know, we don't need to contract other things since we have money. So, let's take that money and hire that person to do what we need for our city. There's the money right there, $69,000 that we all contribute. Moreno Valley, utility residents, not Edison. So, if, if half the city is Edison, the other half is Moreno Valley. We contribute for that man to get hired or woman. So, take the money out of that money and put the rest somewhere else that we're gonna need it for the poles in the future.
Thank you, Rafael. All right. Council deliberation? Okay, entertain a motion by council to approve all recommended actions.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez, second by Mayor Pro Tem Baca. That was Marquez and Baca. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved. Five to zero. We'll move straight to reports, city council reports. We'll start off with March Joint Powers Commission Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing an update on the recent March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on May 9th. It was a very, very short meeting. The commission annexed U.S. Vets and Signature Behavior Health into the March Life Care Communities Facilities District. They also set the annual assessments for the Meridian Park Landscape and Lightning Maintenance District and retain an auditor for the annual audits, and that's it.
Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, oh, that's none there. Okay, so we have Western Riverside Council of Governments, and I'll give that report. WRCOG has identified six general framework goal areas to achieve quality of life and vibrant communities in Western Riverside County. The steering committee meetings will study economic development, water and watershed, education, health, transportation, and energy and environment with final recommendations forwarded to the executive committee. Four options have also been identified to reduce or eliminate tough calculation issues for new development. WRCOG staff is recommending the option where WRCOG verifies all tough exemptions and calculates tough for all new development projects. The preferred option will be forwarded to internal WRCOG committees for review and recommendation before final action is taken by the executive committee. The 27th Annual WRCOG General Assembly and Leadership Address with keynote speaker Steve Forbes, who is actually related to the Forbes Magazine, is scheduled for Thursday, June 21st, 2018 at the Morongo Casino Resort. Lifetime, lifetime achievement rewards will be presented to longtime Riverside Board of Supervisors, Mayor Ashley and John Tavaglioni. Tavaglioni? Okay, all right. Oh, Tavelloni? Okay. All right, and that's that one. We have Councilmember Gaiba for the Western Riverside Council Regional Conservation Authority.
Thank you. I also have a SCAG report, so. Very quickly, we appropriated five new properties into the system. Several of them were very important because they were connectors. Complicated unless you look at all the mapping and stuff, but just for your own knowledge. I'll read what was written up here because this, you know, March, we all pay in to the RCA to purchase these properties. And so, 2018 fee collection report from Moreno Valley included $590,923 for 18 residential permits, or $36,500 for 18 permits and $554 for the development of 80 commercial industrial acres. Fees are assigned to each one of these, so that's collected into those. Nothing more exciting than the fact that we also at RCA had our proposed budget for the fiscal year. So, I don't think I'm gonna belabor you guys with all that because we get enough of it from Marshall. But just to, total revenues so far are proposed for budget year, 2019 was $30,996,670, and total appropriations is $30,900. That's what our projections were. And so, we're on target. We're meeting a lot of our goals. We've met about a third of, of the properties that we're supposed to acquire, so. And then I also encourage you folks to go to the, to my, to my page, and you click on the link to RCA, and then you can go and see the, the... In this case, it was a flower of the month, so it was pretty kind of cool. I keep reminding you of that because there are those teachers out there, biology teachers, I was one, that would just probably love to go there and download that PowerPoint to share with their students at school. It's perfectly available to you to do those. So, they're, they're the spotlighted plants and animals of the month, and it's very well done. It's a good professional thing, so. That's RCA. And may I do SCAG?
Yeah.
Because I think that's the last one on the list. I was excited to go to the SCAG conference we have. It's done annually out in the desert. And I ran into Mr. Cabrera, was there to learn. So, I gave him a little escort about smartly in hopes that we get, get him a little up to speed if he's gonna be sharing on those things. I was there on the second for the communities forum, and then I was there also the third and the fourth for the conference. It's called Southern California at the Crossroads. Won't belabor everything that went on, and you can go to the SCAG website. Again, go to my bio, and you can click on the link that'll take you to the SCAG website to do that. But there are a couple of highlights I'd like to share with you because I was very honored and very proud. Been working for you even from a regional perspective. Some of you remember I was on the big data, open data. We then, because I was on that and a small group or team of us from SCAG, we actually developed the, what they call the final SCAG Future Communities Framework. This is now available to all communities to follow through with, with the framework on the smart cities kind of situation. So, I was actually thanked. That's, I don't often get those, so it was really kind of nice. You can go to SCAG and get this off from your own website if you like. The other thing that I was real honored to do is we have a new president that was elected, and that's President Alan Wapner. And if you don't know who Alan Wapner is, he's also board president for Ontario Airport and also sits on the council for Ontario, the city of Ontario, and Alan. And is all, has been on the transportation. I got a personal invite from him to participate in the, on the, on the committee for reorganization or revaluation of our district scenarios. So, I consider that quite an honor that he would... The way he puts it is, you know, I'd like to invite you and expect to hear that you would have accepted. So, I have accepted, and that's another subcommittee that I will be sitting on for the, for SCAG. And that's all I have for you.
School districts, city joint task force, there's none for that one? Okay, all right, city managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, good evening. First comment, I'd like to address a comment made by a speaker who asserted that the county's general plan is somehow hindering economic development in our community. That's just not accurate. But please don't just take my word for it. Let's just look at how the private sector continues to invest hundreds of millions of dollars, free market investments in our community of Moreno Valley. Fortune 500 companies are coming to our community. More than 8.4 million square feet of industrial space has been absorbed here over the last couple of years with another 7 million square feet under construction. And so, and, and as we've talked before, this council has created more than 14,000 jobs over the last four years. If that's hindering economic development, I'd like to continue doing it in that same manner over the next few years. Our residents can take pride in their city's achievements and can look forward to a very bright future ahead. This evening, the, the report I prepared for you is, I'd like to, to make residents aware of some of the strides that, that our, our council and our city are making. While many communities are struggling to address homelessness, Moreno Valley is leading the way with our very successful homeless-to-work program. Since the program began a few months ago, our partnership with the Salvation Army has already begun changing lives. This week, I'd like to share Riley and Cameron's story, which is just one of several very compelling examples of our program's amazing success. Riley and Cameron were living a few blocks from City Hall, actually taking shelter in a large bush. About a year ago, they felt so discouraged that they stopped caring about anything and basically went into survival mode. Their sole source of income had become change that they solicited at freeway exits. Then they turned to the Salvation Army for food assistance, and they found out about our homeless-to-work program. They shared that their goal was to get back to work, but they, they found it really difficult to reestablish employment after losing their car. Riley was hired into our homeless-to-work program while the program team helped Cameron get his ID and social security card. Our partners also, our partners at the Salvation Army also worked with Cameron and Riley to help them develop the soft skills that they need to succeed. Skills such as communication, hygiene, prioritizing, to help them prepare for employment. And I'd like to share this photo taken just before Cameron and Riley ventured out on job interviews. There they are on the screen. We are delighted to announce that both Cameron and Riley secured full-time positions in a distribution center right here in our city. The homeless-to-work program assisted them with clothing for work and provides ongoing support for them as they seek stable housing and, and working toward self-sufficiency. It is no coincidence that so many amazing programs are being provided to residents in our community. While other cities focus solely on providing basic services, the city of Moreno Valley is unique because we do so much more. We actively seek meaningful opportunities to make positive differences in the lives of our residents. And in closing, I just want to say, under the leadership of our mayor and council and in partnership with the Salvation Army, the homeless-to-work program is changing our community and transforming lives on a daily basis. We're extremely proud of Cameron and of Riley, and we are committed to supporting them on their path to self-sufficiency. That concludes my report this evening.
City attorneys' report?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Brief report, just to update everybody. As you know, the city has been in the process of accepting, accepting applications for the potential openings of commercial cannabis businesses in the city. The application process closed on Friday with 30 applicants applying for the eight permits available for dispensaries. three for manufacturing, two for distribution, three for microbusiness, and two for cultivation. Total of forty applications were filed with the city. Um, pursuant to the ordinance adopted by the council, we'll move forward with the evaluation process and, uh, continue to, uh, get ready for, um, the final steps and, um, selection and issuance of the, of the successful applicants. Congratulations and great thanks to the staff, um, and Finance Department, as well as, as planning, and, and everybody that, that's worked on it. It, uh, it, it was a tremendous effort, and we didn't know what to expect. It was kind of the first step in, in, in this process, and it went very smoothly. So, thank you, uh, council for your direction, and thank you to staff and everybody else. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go, um, thank you, City Attorney. This, uh, brings us to reports and comments from councilmembers who did not speak earlier. Uh, we will go ahead and do five minutes for each, uh, closing comments. We'll start with, uh, Councilmember Gaiba.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Sit on the Transportation Committee for the League of California Cities, and both David and, and I sit on committees for those. And, uh, so I'll just keep it really kinda brief. Transportation Committee also evaluates bills and actions that might go on. Uh, so, we, we did that, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, and say that SB one has no sunset. It goes on forever and ever and ever. Um, now, we know that right now there's a lot going on with SB one and gathering signatures, so we don't know what the impact is, but I will share with the city and the rest that, uh, there is no reason to believe in any way, shape, or form that you'll lose the money that's already given to you if they end up winning and, and changing that. So, whatever money that the city's already received or should receive, will, will, will stay that way and won't have to be paid back. So, um, Proposition sixty-nine is known as the lockbox, that's the one that holds it into a constitutional amendment to not spend certain funds of that money, uh, except for, uh, roads and, and projects of that. AB twenty-six eighty-one is a seismic safety, uh, project that's going on, uh, or a bill that's out. Won't go into all the rest of those details, it wouldn't be too, too much, I don't wanna take up too much time with that. Um, the state budget funding is, has broken out in a group, I'll just give you the categories that the state budget funding was for homelessness. Um, fire prevention, a hundred million, waste diversion, a hundred million, and transformative climate community program for a hundred million. Those are the extra things from the budget that came out. Also, I'd like to share with you, for any of you, um, especially those who are, are concerned about the homeless counts, uh, you can probably contact, um, Tiffany Tran with the settlement Jose Medina, um, in his office, uh, and what they're doing right now is, Census twenty-twenty, California Complete Count, will be hosting their Riverside Regional Con- convening to help build our community's capacity to achieve a complete count during the twenty-twenty census. That's everybody, and that includes the homeless, and that includes everything that they can. So, that's Census for the California Complete Count, Regional Convening in Riverside, May twenty-third, from twelve-thirty to four o'clock PM at UC Riverside Alumni Center. So, you can get more information about that if you contact, uh, contact them. Another item here, uh, is, uh, the Canyon Springs, uh, High School Athletic Complex is just about at the point where they can now do the, uh, ribbon cutting and prepare it for their graduation. That'll be Wednesday, June the sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at nine AM at the Cougar Canyon Drive. So, uh, we invite you to join us from Moreno Valley, uh, University, yeah, Moreno Valley Unified School District. We invite you to join us for the ribbon-cutting ceremony of the Canyon Springs High School Complex. Again, that date is June the sixth at nine AM. Last but not least, you heard Jessica Munoz speak very clearly about the Voices for Children and the CASA program. I, 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 I implore you, if you are wanting to be one of those CASA representatives, is to reach out to Jessica, and they have a whole packet of information on how you can probably do that, um, and, and get that information so that if you want to participate in that program and help with our, uh, young, young people in the city, then they can train you and get you ready, and they have the impact reports and everything on that. It's near and dear to my heart because I had a foster brother that we brought onboard when he was sixteen years old. And before he died at twenty-one, uh, and he was in the Coast Guard at the time, he used to introduce my parents as his mom and dad. Uh, so, they made a great impact, even though they weren't CASAs, they were just good down-home folk. And so, I would encourage you, if you're interested in serving in that capacity, please contact Jessica. And if you need that number, you can contact me, I have it, and the information in the packet, or reach out, and she can send you the packets on the Voices for, for children. I, I think that's enough for me, thank you. Have a nice evening, God bless. Oh, no, one more thing, sorry. Almost forgot. Yesterday, a very dear friend of ours, and some of you know him very well, and he's, uh, served in our communities for years and years, well-known for being the Bloomington High School Coach who, who won five CIF championships, was the inventor of the double-wing offense. Coach Don Markham passed away yesterday. So, I've, I've asked the, uh, the mayor if we can adjourn this meeting in, in the members of, uh, of Coach Don Markham, he was a wonderful man and a lost to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gaiba. Uh, Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just real quick. This week is Police. Appreciate your policemen out there week. I was really moved by a local business here, um, what he did for the police department and their families. And with that, I'm gonna have, um, our police chief, um, talk about the car dealer and what he, he's done for the, or he's doing for the police personnel. Chief?
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to say about National Police Week. First off is, uh, one of the business owners here in Moreno Valley, uh, the Hyundai dealership, uh, the general manager extended a offer not only to law enforcement, but to all public safety members and military and their spouses and families, offering i- in celebration and honor of, uh, their sacrifice and their, their duties, a, a certain amount off of vehicles that were purchased, uh, at his location. Uh, and it's not only just the Moreno Valley Police Department, it's to all law enforcement, public safety, uh, military EMS, uh, veterans, uh, it, it's a very kind gesture. Uh, the second thing I would very much like to do is, uh, extend a heartfelt, uh, and, and very meaningful thank you, uh, to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the councilmembers, uh, the city manager, and the staff for, number one, for the proclamation, uh, honoring law enforcement for National Police Week. Uh, number two, for the lighting of the Moreno Valley M. That small gesture provided by, by you and, and the, the, the staff here really meant a lot to law enforcement. I had it published on our Facebook page, I published it on, um, my LinkedIn page, and I've immediately got information requests from chiefs of police from across the nation on how you went about that, how that happened. And it really was a shot in the arm to our officers here in the city of Moreno Valley and the Sheriff's Department as a whole. Sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much for taking that time and showing that small gesture. It really meant a lot, and means a lot to, uh, the men and women of the Moreno Valley Police Department. Thank you, sir.
And we also appreciate our fire chief. We do appreciate you guys too. You'll, you'll, you'll have your day and week coming. Secondly, I, I, I just wanna announce that, um, I was asked by the League of Cities in Sacramento to be on a committee, and it's, it's, uh, a committee to regulate and, um, propose to the state, um, government on drones. There've been a lot of problems with drones lately, especially with fire season, and the state is asking League of Cities to help them, um, come up with some good, um, good laws, ordinance to control that. And I've been asked to be on that committee, so. Um, last week, we, we do a conference calling, save cost on flying up there every time they, somebody's got a question, so. In the near future, uh, I'll be asking residents, um, staff, you know, what, what they see about drones, safety and, and other things, um, you know, they, they, they've got somewhere, um, Amazon wants to use drones to deliver packages, and there was talk about some food markets that wanted to deliver food, but it, it's getting to the point where it's, it's like having, um, everybody has a computer, well, everybody wants drones now, so. The state's asking the League of Cities to help them with that, so. I, I'm very honored to be asked by League of Cities to, to be on that committee, so. We look, I look forward to, to working on, on that. Uh, other than that, uh, wish everybody a good evening, and, um, we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. Uh, just a few things here tonight. Uh, firstly, I would like to remind everyone about the food pantry, um, over, uh, at Four Square Christian Chapel on, uh, Redlands Boulevard. The address is one-three-seven-nine-three Redlands Boulevard. That's the first and third Saturdays of the month, from eight AM to ten AM, and all you need to bring is some form of identification, and we'll give you, um, a, a lot of food, water and things of that sort. Also, uh, the, the Join the Conversation mailers were mentioned, I believe that was Marshall. I actually received mine in the mail, and so that, that, I hope, I hope residents, uh, that receive that will fill those out, send them back, or visit the link, um, the website and fill it out. We need your input, and this kind of, uh, segues into the, um, the general plan update. It's kind of a head start on acquiring that input and the vision from the residents. What do residents wanna see, uh, here in the city? So, uh, if you have that, please, uh, fill it out, let us know what, what, uh, you would like to see here in the city. Also, the, uh, partnership with the college, um, Mike Lee, thank you. I know you guys have been very active, you and your team, uh, over at Moreno Valley College, and the people are happy, the students are talking about it a lot, and, um, it's just, it makes me happy to know that they're, they have a little bit of help, a little bit of, more of assistance, uh, from our side. And just last week, I met, uh, Ms. Woods, who is, um, she's the lead for the, uh, cybersecurity program over at the college, and that's, uh, kinda like a certificate program, and they had the Mayor's Cup, I believe Councilmember Marquez was there, um, I think two weeks ago or so. And she, she mentioned about, um, she talked a lot about the program, and it really, uh, got me thinking because when, uh, this will segue into the next topic, I'm talking about, um, how e- everything is being more and more connected, uh, you know, transportation, communication, uh, forms of energy. Um, all of it is being connected more and more through a network, you know, the internet. It's all being connected, um, exchange of statistics and data and all of that. Um, so cybersecurity is gonna be very important, and that, that's kind of another option for our students to venture into, in addition to nursing and all of those kinda things, um, if, for those students who don't wanna get a degree. So, I'm really glad to hear that we have that, and, uh, our students here from, from our city, from our area, are, are, you know, they're making it pretty high in these, uh, in these competitions, and that's why we have the Mayor's Cup here at the college. Let's see, uh, the next one, um, one of the residents, one of the, um, public comments brought up the roads, and I kinda just wanna share, I don't know if you can see this, but, um, here's a picture of the Slurry Seal, um, that we, um, that we approved for seventeen eighteen, and this, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but should, uh, should be starting soon if, if it hasn't already started. And then, the one point two that we allocated, uh, one point two million from our surplus, and thank you, Marshall, and your team for all of that. Uh, we were able to allocate one point two from our general fund to, uh, fix some streets, and you can kinda see that on here. Uh, one of them is Kitching from Iris to Cremaria, another one is part of Cactus. I think Eucalyptus is on here as well. So, I just wanna share that, and then, I wanna talk about this past Friday, uh, we were up in Walnut Creek, Councilmember Marquez and Councilman Gaiba, uh, we were up there, and w- we were received by, I believe the name is Contra Costa Transportation Commission, uh, up in Walnut Creek, and we were learning, the, the, the main purpose was about autonomous vehicles, self-driving vehicles and everything that they're doing up north, and, but, in addition to that, they were talking about other options, things that they're working on to try to solve the congestion problem up in Northern California, San Francisco, Sacramento, Oakland, that whole area. And one of them that really got my attention was, uh, they, one of their projects is allowing buses to drive on the shoulders for short periods of, of, uh, you know, for a short length, um, and hoping that that might alleviate a little bit of congestion. And another idea that I received, uh, from the city of Monrovia, I've mentioned it to, to staff, and, uh, we were gonna talk about this earlier, but I waited until now. The Dial-a-Ride, uh, the city of Monrovia used to subsidize Dial-a-Ride, and there were some numbers that the city manager shared. They compared, uh, Dial-a-Ride subsidies were about nineteen to twenty dollars per ride, and, uh, they have a new program where they partnered with Lyft, and now they subsidize Lyft rides for about five to six dollars a ride, and residents are paying fifty cents per ride. So, I'm hoping that maybe through RTA, you know, this might help the county, could save a lot of money potentially, and it would in turn help the city of Moreno Valley as well. So hopefully, that's something we could bring there. Um, we have a time limit today?
Yeah, it's five minutes.
Wow. Um, just real quick, homeless-to-work, we have that. Um, if you don't know about it, uh, feel free to reach out to us, and Art Fest and Food Truck Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Thank you, um, I wanna say thank you to the police chief for, uh, bringing the attention to the illuminating of the M on behalf of National Police Week because it's, it's very important to us that, uh, the people that are here to, to help us, to protect us, be recognized, and, um, thank you for your, your wonderful comment because I also received a lot of feedback from that, and it was all very positive. We also lit the M up on Sunday for Mother's Day, and it was pink, and all moms, you know, were out there feeling really, um, appreciated, and I, I did too, and I looked at it and it was like, I don't think I've ever seen it pink before, but I may be wrong, I may be wrong. I, on Friday, uh, I represented the city at the, um, Small Business Association Award Ceremony. And I'm, I'm so honored to have been there to receive the two thousand and eighteen Community Excellence Award from the United States Small Business Association. I'm sorry, Small Business Administration. This prestigious award recognizes the city's passion for helping small businesses succeed at every stage of development from startup to expansion. This is the first time the Small Business Administration has presented the Community Excellence Award. So, I'd like to congratulate the mayor, the city council, the staff for receiving the inaugural Community Excellence Award. And the poster is right there for, um, anyone to come by, photo ops, take pictures, because, uh, it just shows what we're doing here in the city. We're just raking in those awards, and it seems like we keep winning. So, I just wanna say thank you to, uh, the mayor, the city council, and the staff for making all this possible, for putting Moreno Valley on the map, and, you know, we're still competing for some more awards. I also attended, uh, the Southern California Association of Governments' annual conference in Indian Wells as a delegate voter, and today, well, let, let me talk about the Jazz Festival. I attended the Jazz Festival on, on May fifth, and it's the first Saturday of every month. And let me tell you, we have talent. All our high, not all our high school, but the high schools and the middle schools presented the best of our jazz musicians, and they put on an excellent show. So, next year, first Saturday of the month, please, please attend with us. And finally, uh, today, uh, District One, which is my district, your district, we held our Business Roundtable. It was a very well-attended, um, event. We have a lot of small businesses in the city, uh, not just small, but, uh, we also had some pretty large, uh, companies there, and, uh, it was well-attended, and there was a lot of, uh, information. Mike Lee, thank you very much for your excellent, as always, presentation, and, uh, our city manager for being there and letting all our businesses know what's available. You know, our partners were there, and it was, it was just a great event, and I'm glad that, uh, we had it, and we had a very good interaction with each other, the small businesses with the large businesses, and people found out what we have to offer here to support our businesses because we're a very business-friendly community, and, you know, we roll out the red carpet, and we do good business here, so. I didn't hear any complaints from any of the, of the businesses. So I didn't hear any complaints from any of the businesses saying that, you know, there's too much red tape, it takes too long. People are talking about how effective and efficient our staff is, and how they get their things done right away. So thank you so much, and we got to keep on truckin'.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I've also heard the same thing as well from many people out in the community of how business-friendly we are and all the practices that we have, you know, with the Higher Movail program, the local higher, you know, initiative to reducing that red tape, the Simplicity Program that we have with streamlining, the planning, so a lot of great things happening to bring all of those jobs to the city. I do want to mention again that it's Foster Care Month for the month of May, so May 20th, we will be lighting the M on the Box Springs blue in recognition of Foster Care Month and for our foster youth in Moreno Valley. Also, I want to mention that there was a gentleman, I believe his name was Edgar, you know, just like Councilmember Cabrera mentioned earlier about the roads, we have contributed about $2.4 million already. I know that last year, we did have about a $5 million surplus, so if there is a surplus, you know, this year, we'll probably be proposing that to the council to put a lot of that money more into the roads, you know, back into the roads, because we do really need to fix those roads. I did attend the Jazz Festival towards the end, and it was amazing, it was really nice, and I saw you were there for a while, enjoying yourself, that was great. I do want to mention the other event that I was able to attend, and I was just amazed of how well they perform and sing, was actually at Vista de la Gua High School. I attended the spring choir there, and I was just amazed of, like, all of the songs and all of the performances that they did. It was just really, really amazing. I also attended the Moreno Valley Elites Soccer Tournament. This is a program conducted by the Think Together, which is our after-school partner. We administer the grant for Think Together, and so Think Together administers the after-school care to 44 school sites throughout the city with Valverde Unified and Moreno Valley Unified School District. And it was just really nice to hear from the kids about how happy they were, like, to finally have the sports in the middle school, you know, as far as soccer. You know, last season, it was basketball, and they were so happy, too, but this time, I guess they were just kind of mentioning how happy they were about it, and I don't know, to me, it was really, really nice to hear that from the kids. I also want to say that I attended, about two weeks ago, we had the Mayor's Challenge Kickoff Event over at Moreno Valley College. This was basically the inaugural class of starting the Mayor's Challenge, where we had about 30 students actually receive $1,000 to use however they want. It does have to be legal, you know, they can't do anything illegal with it, but, you know, so they can spend it for rent, gas, books, you know, any of those kinds of things while they're attending their class. And so really, it's the Mayor's Challenge, which is Movail Learns, and that's the program that we have, and it's really to see if we can overcome that earn versus learn dilemma that constantly a lot of college students face. So it's a really great program, and there were so many students that were happy to receive that $1,000 checks, and Mike, you were there, I mean, people were so happy, and it was really, really, a really nice moment to see. And then we also have a control group that's also receiving some other money, too, as well, but, you know, the real money, the big money was the $1,000 that each student received, and they were just so happy about it. So my hope is that on August, when we submit the big application, that we win the grand prize, and then we can extend it to even more Moreno Valley residents that live out in the community. And we're doing so many partnerships with the college, you know, there's the Promise Initiative, the second year that we're doing with them already, to help pay for college for free, and then we're also doing now the incubator program, the Make Your Space Program. So I really like that, and by the way, that's open to the public, too. So I don't know if that was mentioned, but it is open to the public, so I'm hoping that we have a lot of entrepreneurs that can take advantage of that program. And so I'd like to end in memory of Don Markham. He was a community member, a leader, and he participated and coached in so many sports-related programs here in the city and in the region. Let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting in memory of Don Markham. Thank you.